Yay. I have problems being heard, so that's good. Who's that?
Jeremy Howra from the ambulance district.
I don't know Jeremy.
Oh my God.
Uh oh.
He's riding against?
No, no.
Oh, you mean for his long voice?
Below his.
He's gonna take my MC work is what she's saying.
Oh, I gotcha.
He's got the voice, he's gonna take.
And highly unpaid.
Yes, that's right.
Donna, I have a question.
I'm coming to unpaid hours.
Oh, today.
Has anybody?
Have you watched that? You watched?
I don't know if like something will get passed out. I'm like the talks there or something. Oh, I didn't know if any directors were gonna be here.
No, they're webexing this.
Well, I can turn it off and save the battery then.
I stay away from all noise.
Have you ever watched that series on Netflix called Shits Creek?
No, I heard it's good though.
You look just like the gal that's in that.
I'm gonna look it up. There's a, there's a girl. I wonder if it's the girl. There's a girl that was in the movie Andre. Remember Andre with the seal? And then she was in A Bullion Dynamite. I've been told my whole life it looks like her. I wonder if it's her. I'm gonna go look it up right now though. We don't have the document camera on. Do you think we'll need to turn that on too?
I don't think anybody. It's just us that are in here now, right? I think this is your full crowd.
I'll see what I can do on that.
He's got.
Hey, where's your rowing suit?
I got sandblasts.
Oh, that's right. It was sandblasts.
Yes, he's one of the bad ones.
So he is here and he's just.
Did he have to get a waiver? They said, have you been to the winery? Bob Schnerd, for running with my mic is live. Okay, Bob, I don't know what I said, but thanks for coming.
How's everybody?
Hey, Joe.
We have all of the directors on WebEx, so we're watching you as we speak.
Hey, I've been isolated for what, two weeks?
Seems like forever.
My wife laughs at me because I take my temperature every day. She's like, are you sick yet? I'm like, I'm not, but I keep coming at her with the thermometer.
Are you working?
Yeah.
In an office or what?
Yeah. We're Department of Defense contractors, so.
Is John White gonna be on?
He's supposed to be here. So when you speak, speak towards that microphone.
Okay.
John's supposed to be here. Wait one more. He told me he'd be here tonight. All right, I'll hang out here. Hey Donna, I just sent you a screenshot of that email I got on financial disclosure, but I'll also call him tomorrow.
There he is.
Hey, Mr. White.
What, you got a Ziploc bag in your hand? You have clothes or a Ziploc bag? That's a good, that's a pretty good.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the St. Charles County Council meeting of March the 30th, 2020. We will start off here with an invocation that has been written by Pastor Steve Below of O'Fallon Christian Church and will be read by Councilman Elam. Followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Dave Hammond.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for being able to meet and do the business of our community. We ask for a hedge of protection around our community and its leaders, and decisions need to be made and actions taken. I pray for the frontline workers.
In the hospital, in the doctors' offices, in the grocery stores, in the businesses that are remaining open to supply our needs and do what we can as a community to go forward. Protect our police officers, our firefighters, as they are shorthanded and in direct contact with the public. We pray for our national leaders, the President, Congress, and the House, that they would make wise decisions out of your direction, so that our county will again become healthy, vibrant, and productive. Watch over what we do this evening and bless those that have needs and concerns as we continue with the work that needs to be done. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brizel. Councilmember Mike Elam.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Nancy Schneider.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Here.
Prior to our meeting starting, we are going to have some comments from our county councillor, Mr. Watson, and please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. For purpose of the meeting tonight, I'd just like to incorporate into the record and in the meetings of this, the minutes of this meeting, that we'll be operating again under a declared state of emergency. And consistent with that, the public will be participating through a virtual meeting and they'll be able to observe what we're doing by going to sccmo.org and following on YouTube. And they have been also encouraged to submit comments and public comments that will be also read at the meeting tonight. And with that, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Appreciate it. For public comments tonight, we are going to do something obviously different than what we normally do since we do not have the public present. What we've done is taken comments that have been sent in to us, emailed to our county council offices over the last three or four days, and we are going to read those comments, following our normal number of rules about no longer than three minutes and no more than three, four, or against any particular issue. So we will start off now with public comments, and Claire, will you start?
Sure. The first topic will be concerning Missouri American Water Tower request. And I'm gonna read a letter that is in the same form and content as 28 other letters from residents of the Berkshire Downs subdivision, Autumn Trace subdivision, Legacy Point subdivision, and Avonale subdivision. Dear councilmembers, I'm asking for your support in holding the Board of Zoning Adjustments decision to deny American Water Company's variance request, thereby prohibiting them from exceeding a 40-foot maximum height limit in the R1A single-family residential district and preventing Missouri American Water Company.
From constructing a 2 million gallons water storage tank, which would be 140 feet in height at 530 Canous Road. While I understand the need for additional water and pressure in some regions of St. Charles County, my reasons for opposition are many. One is a taxpayer homeowner and registered voter in the subdivision. I should not have to shoulder the burden and loss of revenue by way of reduced property values in my area and associated lower resale value of my home as a result of a 140-foot water tower I saw. Additionally, we would ask that American Water Company explore alternative locations or consider a 40-foot water tower instead of the proposed 140-foot tower. A 140-foot water tower has no place in a residential neighborhood and American Water will, after construction of the tower, see increased revenue and enjoy newly added customers, while we, the surrounding property owners, having purchased and built homes around a small water pumping station, with the knowledge that neither higher than a 40-foot tower could ever be built in the location, would now suffer a financial burden. Three, furthermore, American Water Company states that they could erect a ground storage at this location below the 40-foot limit, but indicates that it would not provide the height necessary for proper water pressure. I do not believe that all considerations, such as using electrical pumps, generators, or bladder storage, have been considered and believe that American Water is saving money by erecting a 140-foot tower here in our residential neighborhood versus investing the extra expense to place this tower in a commercial area or consider options for a 40-foot storage unit. I believe any additional short-term expense to purchase new property and build the needed infrastructure would certainly create jobs and contracts supporting local businesses and county tax revenue. I would ask that you please stand with me, your constituent, and vote no on reversing the variance request decision made by the Boarding of Zoning Adjustments. Along with my neighbors, I will be watching with great anticipation the vote on Monday, March 30th. Please support us with your no vote and make American Water Company do the right thing by moving the water tower to a commercial location, secure a new location in the region impacted, or reduce the size of the water tower to 40 feet. Thank you for your consideration.
And Donna will read an opposing letter.
This letter is from Drew Weber, Hamilton Weber LLC. Good evening, councilmembers. Good evening, members of the county council. In times of crisis such as the current pandemic, the importance of safe and reliable public utility services has become very clear. Missouri American Water Company submitted variance application 1906 to construct a 140-foot tall water storage tank at 530 Canous Road to ensure that its water supply system is reliable at all times for its 30,500 customers in St. Charles County. Therefore, I request that the St. Charles County Council approve variance application 19-06 and overrule the Board of Adjustment' decision to deny the variance. Missouri American is a public utility that has been issued a certificate of convenience and necessity by the Missouri Public Service Commission to provide water service within St. Charles County. Consistent with its practice, Missouri American submitted the variance application to obtain community input. In addition, Missouri American held a virtual meeting with nearby residents on March 26, 2020, to address residents' concerns. Missouri American also prepared an engineering report to analyze three different properties for the storage tank. According to that report, an additional 2 million gallons of water supply storage is needed in Missouri American's service area. Further, an elevated storage tank better maintains water pressure throughout the system, improves reliability because there is no dependency on electrical power, and ensures fire flow availability. Out of the three sites analyzed in that report, the 530 Canous Road property was chosen because a water storage tank on that property was determined to best meet the needs of Missouri American's customers. Further, critical infrastructure, including a large diameter transmission main and an emergency interconnect with Public Water Supply District Number Two, are already located at the property. Therefore, I hereby request that the county council approve variance application 19-06 and overrule the Board of Adjustment' decision to deny the variance. Thank you.
This next letter is from Greg Rosnow. Councilmembers, thank you for taking the time to carefully analyze the proposal by Missouri American Water. I understand that you have only one task, to decide whether to grant a variance of St. Charles County ordinance 405.090.D.1, which calls for a maximum height in an R1A residential zone, to be 40 feet. I have read the ordinance and it does allow for an elevated water storage tank, but not, does not grant them a height variance over 40 feet. That would only be allowed by the council zoning board. After listening in on the town hall call and reading all the information provided by Missouri American Water, as well as the debate by the council, I don't believe that Missouri American Water has shown a hardship that should grant them permission for a height variance. One, they have admitted that they can put a pump under 40 feet at the location that would serve the needs of their water pressure issues. Two, they have allegedly submitted other alternate locations that could put this tower to fulfill their requirements. Three, they have not provided any sort of monetary hardship detail to go along with their request, only generalities that who knows are true. If they really wanted to show hardship, they should have put together concrete numbers showing how a pump or alternate location would have really impacted users in terms of costs. Their failure to do this simple task, something anyone tasked with such a project should have done, is irresponsible. Since they have not provided a true hardship based on facts only hearsay, the height variance should be voted down at the meeting tonight. Thank you for continuing to govern during these unprecedented times. Sincerely, Greg Rosnow.
This is from Renee Lawrence, Senior Project Engineer, Missouri American Water. Dear members of the St. Charles County Council, as the project manager for the 2 million gallon St. Charles Elevated Tank Project, I am proapproval of the request for variance submitted in Bill 4816. Since the March 9th, 2020 council meeting, Missouri American Water Company continued its due diligence efforts to compile information for submission to council. Some of that information has been submitted through our legal representative. An estimated cost analysis for alternative locations was completed and is attached for the public record. In addition to written due diligence, Missouri American Water Government Affairs Liaison reached out to residents of the Berkshire Downs and Autumn Trace subdivisions to hold a public meeting. A one-hour virtual public meeting was held on March 26, 2020, with an estimated 30 residents' homes connected and participating. Some pre-submitted questions were answered during that meeting. Written responses to those pre-submitted questions are included as an attachment for the record. As a good neighbor, an email address has been established to field questions related to the elevated tank. The email address is stcharleswaterstorage@amwater.com. Missouri American Water Company is committed to providing world-class water services to the St. Charles County service area. Construction of the 2 million gallon elevated storage tank at the 530 Canous Road location is the best location for maintaining system pressures and providing additional fire flow water quantities for water distribution system demands within the service area. As a public utility and water services provider, we anticipate approval of the appealed variance request initially submitted to this council in January of this year. There are seven attachments total for this record.
This is from Scott Wagner. Counsel, first of all, I would like to thank Mike Elam for helping to set up and attend the virtual meeting between the residents of Missouri American Water and Berkshire Downs. I was personally hoping to have more time to ask questions, but unfortunately, about 45 minutes of the 60-minute time allotment was taken up by Renee from Missouri American Water rehashing most of the same sales pitch. They say that local fire departments need the increased pressure, but failed to offer any proof of that one asked. I saw a lot of really good questions that went unanswered. Unfortunately, in my opinion, it comes down to this. Missouri American Water wants you to grant their request for a variance because it would be the most cost-effective for them both now and down the road. Unfortunately, that does come at a cost. It costs the many homeowners who back up to that monstrosity their view. It costs all homeowners in the area money because their home values will decrease. We knew when we bought our homes that a 40-foot water tower was always a possibility, and I'm okay with that. I won't like it, but I bought my home knowing that was possible and have no right to complain. During our web chat, I asked MAW, Missouri American Water, if they could build a 40-foot tower with expanding pumping stations and backup generators and generate the exact same amount of water pressure that a 140-foot tower would generate. I got a rambling answer about how pumps can fail and how much more work that was for them to maintain, but finally, she answered the root of my question. She answered yes. They could generate the exact same amount of water pressure other ways. It isn't their preference, but it would solve their problem. If they don't want to use another piece of land, fine, use the one they already own and spend the money to make it work on the property you own within the limits set by the county, and you can generate the exact same amount of water pressure you claim you need. I also asked what the cost of those expanding pumps and generators would be compared to the cost of the water tower, and I did not get a direct answer. But another representative from Missouri American Water said that the tower was not the cheapest route for them. Either way, Missouri American Water is not a nonprofit company. The company's worth and yearly profit is readily available online, and it should be well within their means to make this work to help their customers who aren't, who aren't us, by the way, without costing them much more money. And even if their customers bill one up a few pennies or a couple dollars a month, at least their customers will get increased water pressure for that cost. We get nothing but headache. Missouri American Water would like you to think that the 140-foot tower is the only way to make this work. I know it is your job to determine whether or not that is true by granting their variance. The truth is, they have other options. The 140-foot tower may be the most convenient method for them, but the council shouldn't be in the business of meeting the convenience of large corporations. Thanks for your time, and I hope you will vote down their request for a variance. Scott Wagner.
Now, I believe that concludes the comments on the water tower issue. Is that correct or not? Do you still?
I have nothing else for the water tower. We had two in favor of the water tower and 42 letters against the water tower.
Okay, thank you, Claire. The second topic are correspondence we've received from constituents about the COVID virus here in the county, so we will.
The first is from Bryn Sanders. I would like to ask that the council reconsider making a mandatory shelter-in-place mandate that would require nonessential businesses to close and institute clear penalties. Too many people don't take this seriously and have financial incentives to stay open. The experts and science shows that extreme measures are required to combat this virus. By waiting, you are only delaying the inevitable. Please give the hospitals time to get the necessary supplies. If you do not take expert advice, please give a public statement outlining what your plan is to combat this pandemic. After watching the emergency meeting that was held on 3/20, it was not even discussed. Here are the questions I would like answered. One, how is the county helping to support local hospitals? How will they get the necessary supplies? Two, how many respirators and/or respiratory qualified staff are available in the county? What is the projected need in the coming four weeks? Three, will the county need to create additional field hospitals to deal with the sick and dying? Four, where will those additional facilities be? Five, will the morgues be able to handle the influx of the dead? If not, what is the plan? I have to think that if you do not have a solid plan to handle the likely consequences of not shutting down, you must take the most conservative measures available. You must provide solid data on what you have and what you will need to show the residents of St. Charles County that you are ready for this. Thank you, Bryn Sanders. Bryn. Bryn. Bryn Sanders. Second letter is from Mark Bean. As a resident of St. Charles County, I must voice my opinion concerning the inadequate response on the part of our county government relative to the COVID-19 health crisis. Allowing individuals and businesses to determine what is essential is irresponsible and is not mitigating the spread of this virus. I would ask that you listen to the majority of your residents who are begging you to take appropriate action and issue a mandatory shutdown order for nonessential businesses, which would be identified as St. Louis City and County have done. Thank you, Mark Bean. I have a third letter from Mary Miracle. Dear councilmembers, numerous health professionals have reiterated the importance of social distancing to protect us from the COVID-19 virus. Mr. Elman has stated that it isn't the government's place to tell people or businesses what to do. Yet other city governments have done just that, including St. Louis City and County, by mandating the closure of nonessential businesses and shelter-in-place. Why won't you protect the people of St. Charles and mandate those actions? The number of cases is increasing daily. St. Charles needs to get ahead of the spread of this virus so we can get back to our normal lives, and we look to you for that leadership.
We'll take one more.
This is from Tracy Wagener. As a longtime resident and healthcare provider, I am appalled at the current atmosphere in our county. Just to and from my office, I've encountered groups hanging out in cul-de-sacs in parking lots, full parking lots at every store that's open, and packed drive-through lines. I hear stories of people continuing to have friends over, even having parties. It doesn't matter if they're six feet apart. That is only a guideline for when you must go out for essentials. By allowing the general public to decide what they consider essential, you are not only putting our residents at grave risk, but you will also stretch our health resources to the breaking point.
Okay, again, this was kind of unusual, but you know, we've really felt that it was necessary to allow the public comments and for the council to hear residents' opinions on the various issues that are in front of us, so that ends public comment, I believe?
We have no other comments.
No other comments? And next on the agenda is an oral report from the county executive.
Mr. Chairman, I don't, I don't have any prepared report. I assume that you're getting good reports from our meeting every day, and if you have any questions, as I suggested the last meeting, please give me a call. And if I can't call you back during the day, I can definitely call you back at night. And I guess for the public, we would just encourage them to, to go to our website. We try to keep all the information that they need to know on that website. All the information they need to know, and we legally can give them. You know, there are some privacy issues involved in this, which we have to observe. But in terms of those, that first letter, Joanne, I think everything that was mentioned here, we're in the process of dealing with right now. We don't have the answers yet. But in terms of, you know, special facilities for the hospital and the number of cases and so forth and so on, that is all being discussed, and hopefully, in a short period of time, we'll have some answers to all those questions. Would you add, want to add anything to that?
We've raised those things to the hospitals several times, and they've been very clear that with the information they have so far, and that they are in constant flux within the walls of their various hospital buildings, trying to build additional surge capacity, creating negative airspace to handle COVID-19 cases, and completely relaying out how they will work with each other in all of their feeder hospitals. So I know they're working very hard to be able to come to sort of a more definitive answer, but we have made it known to them that we will take on any burden for them they would like us to take on, including funding housing for staff who either feel like they can't go home for fear they've been exposed, or who maybe have exposed but don't know the outcome of that yet, and a variety of other things. We've told them that we'd be happy to help source PPE. That is one of their, you know, the personal protective equipment is still one of their number-one shortage problems. That along with ventilators, so we're working very closely. Dmitri Cianci Chapman, who is our Public Health Director, for people who are listening on YouTube, is in constant contact with both the hospitals and with the other public health directors and with the state. So, and our epidemiologists doing contact tracing are in daily contact with the other counties and working with them on all contact tracing. So it's kind of an unprecedented cross-pollinization of every resource that people have. We're working with St. Louis County to try to do orders with them for various types of supplies and shortages, including for masks for our own first responders. So there really don't seem to be any barriers at this point that aren't being addressed, and especially for the, you know, to support the hospitals and the healthcare systems.
Okay, thank you.
I think that I've communicated this with several of you. I've communicated with several of you that the most, one of the most frustrating things for me is that we don't, we don't know exactly how many people are being tested. And because of that, because of that, you know, when people just look at the raw numbers, they think, well, shoot, it's not, maybe it's not as bad in St. Charles County as it is in St. Louis County. And I would like to hope that's true, but we don't know that for sure. It may just be that more people are being tested than we know about the people who. It may just be that more people are being tested than we know about the people who are infected in St. Louis County and don't know them about them out here. So, I would love if we could get to some kind of number where we know what percentage of the people we test are positive, or even if we knew how many people per 10,000 residents, you know, they would go ahead and put that out publicly so people could have a better appreciation of where we might fit in with some of the others. I've done a lot of research on the 1918 epidemic in the city of St. Louis. And one thing I've noticed from that is that the more dense the area, the faster the infection rate, or the larger the infection rate. But in that particular hundred years ago, you know, eventually, those suburbs like Kirkwood and Westover Groves and whatever, they were slow to get started because they weren't as dense, but they came along, and I think we're seeing more of that in St. Charles Franklin and Jefferson County. But that's the most frustrating thing. Only other thing I would, just, I don't know if we said anything or mentioned to you. Yesterday, we had a nice discussion with Ann Wagner after the bill passed in Jefferson City, and today, we had an equally productive discussion with Blaine Litgemar, just talking about what's going to be the next step here. And I don't know.
You mean the bill passed in Washington, D.C.?
Yeah, the bill passed.
You said Jefferson City.
Huh?
You said Jefferson City.
Oh, no, they're not passing anything up there. I'm sorry. Yeah, the CARES Act or whatever it is. And so, we've been in contact with our federal officials. We've been in contact with the governor's office, and we're just waiting to see how they distribute that money that they're going to be getting from Washington, D.C. John, do you want to add anything to that? Okay, thank you.
I think one important thing that I think people are starting to, as they start becoming aware of the CARES Act and the funding that's available, as it applies to state and local governments, that funding is tied only to COVID-related response expenses. It's not to prop up budgets that are being impacted by economic decline or things like that. So, it's an allocation of resources, and then you have to only allow, it's only allowed for reimbursement for documented COVID-related expenses.
All right, next on the agenda.
Are we going to ask any questions?
Sure, oh, you're certainly welcome. I'm sorry.
No, I think you guys are doing a good job because we don't know what we don't know. So, I mean, you're going to get people who are going to complain, because if you go one way, you're going to get complaints. You go the other way, you're going to get complaints. So, I think what you're doing is just exactly what you need to do. And, you know, there's always the possibility, as we were doing some conversations, emails, you guys were all on, and it's like, you don't know if this is an overreaction. Now, of course, every demographic is going to be different. Like, New York, you know, we see all that horrible stuff going on in New York, and California, Louisiana, but we're nothing like that. We're different here. Now, potentially, could it get to that point? I don't know. We're not so close quarters, but I guess the worst part about this whole thing is you don't know what you don't know, because we just don't know. And that's why, so, if you're, if some folks are saying you're overreacting, well, I guess it's better to be safe than to be sorry. So, I don't know. I guess what I'm saying is you get a lot of people complaining, so I wouldn't, of course, you guys know that, but you can't make everybody happy. You just got to do what you got to do.
Councilman, there's a really excellent article that one of, that the SSM system sent us today that really explains this that I will forward on to you all tonight, that if you have a chance to look on it on an interactive device where you can see it all sort of play out, I think it really tries to help explain the healthcare concern about potentially what could happen here.
That's my homework assignment for tonight, Joanne.
I told you, you guys, when we talk, and I've mentioned to you guys, that website's called Coronavirus Worldometer. As far as I know, if anybody needs fact-checking, I think it's pretty accurate, and it gives a lot of information on all kinds of statistics. And I think if you look at that, it kind of, I mean, all the other viruses we had through years past, and all the other information, all the death rates of the ages and all the other stuff, and so, it's probably good for everybody to get on that and look at that and just, I don't know, I don't know. It kind of, I don't know, it kind of gives you some kind of a clarity, maybe. I don't know.
I think the governor and the executive are spot on with the response. I mean, I've told that to a whole lot of folks. It's a tough line you're walking, Steve, and same way with the governor, but I think you're doing the right thing. I also think the public and businesses are really getting the message, and I'm seeing people that are really responding and doing social distancing, wearing masks, and being careful. So, I think a combination of good stewardship and leadership by the governor and county executive, and the citizens of this county and businesses of this county that are reacting in proper manners, in proper manners so that we limit the spread of this, I think we're on track. So, it's not a pleasant situation, but hopefully, we'll all get through it.
One more thing, is there any way, though, that, who knows how long this is going to go on? Are we going to have another two, four, six more conferences like this? Can we have, can we do teleconferences so speakers can, you could put on the website that they got to sign up online, just like we do speaker cards, and then they, if they're on the board, they get to speak on their topic, and that way, maybe see them? I mean, we're doing teleconferences with our company. That's how we're meeting our schools and everything else. So, I mean, we could be able, should be able to do that in this county where people can at least be seen and heard, maybe not right there, but virtually anyway, you know?
I mean, like Zoom is one that I hear a lot of people are using. Seems to be pretty user-friendly. I've never experienced it, so.
It's something that we sort of look into. Like, this step that we took tonight was, you know, the reading the comments, you know, trying to at least go a little ways towards that. But I think, you know, if we are not going to allow physical presence, which we obviously are, you know, concerned, I think that's something we can look into. All right, any other comments, questions? All right, next is the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remove the parks. Change order, please.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we are now going to need a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Can I ask a point of order here real quick? I know we get in trouble with this on a regular basis, where we remove an item from the consent agenda, and then we go ahead and pass the consent agenda, and then we may end up passing that particular item that was removed. I just want to make sure, should we discuss this issue first, make a decision on that, and then deal with the remainder of the consent agenda?
I think that's a completely appropriate way to do it. I mean, these are, these imaginations are, I think, whatever works best for the council is appropriate. So, if you want to deal with that, if you want to deal with that item first and discuss it and take it and deal with it first, I think that's the cleanest way to do it.
I would encourage you, Mr. Chairman, if we could go that direction, discuss Mr. Cronin's objection to the parks issue, and then after we deal with that, depending on what we deal with that, we could pass the entire consent agenda or the consent agenda notwithstanding that issue.
I have no problem with that.
I had a motion to approve the agenda.
Oh, withdraw, okay. All right, so let's first of all, you know, talk about the item that has been removed. Mr. Cronin.
I just don't think it's appropriate to spend money for a parks project when we have, might need that money for other issues down the road. And I do understand that that money is destined for, currently destined for only parks, but I think with the coming recession, we're going to have to explore other ways of using use tax in this county. It's inevitable. Additionally, I don't understand why it costs $47,000 just to delete some water and some sewer lines, and also to eliminate a comfort station. The planning alone for this park now is over $400,000, and essentially, it's 15 to 20 campsites, a couple boat ramps, and a big parking lot. So, I don't like that part of it as well. And thirdly, I don't see any reason why this is so, has to be handled in a timely manner because unfortunately, that park's going to be covered up with water probably this spring in a not-too-distant future. So, for that reason, I would like to not table it at this time, but if I have to, I will vote no on it. So, thank you.
Mr. Brad.
I would just like to say that I do not agree with Mr. Cronin, because if communities start delaying these projects and stopping progress, then we're just hurting the economy even more. I mean, people are relying on construction to move forward. This company who's doing the engineering, they're relying on this. So, these cancellations are, it's just, we're feeding into the whole negativity of, the cure is becoming worse than the virus on doing this kind of stuff. So, parks money has to stay in parks money. You can't spend it on anything else, so.
And if you go to the voters for a referendum, that could change.
Well, we're not doing that. I mean, so I would not be in favor of stopping this project. We've got to keep moving forward. We have to progress, and so, I will not support it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this came into my desk. I had the same initial reaction. I said, you know, why are we going to spend this amount of money at this time for this project? And I, but I had Mr. Gryff who come in, and he explained to me that we're just basically finishing up what's already been started, which is the engineering. So, you know, I think you would be absolutely right. We should think twice, maybe, before we start construction. But if we don't finish the engineering, what we've done so far is not going to be good for anybody to, or for anything. So, I had the same reaction. I think if we're talking about construction, I agree with you, but if we're just talking about finishing the engineering, I would ask you to go ahead and pass it.
All right.
Motion.
We have a, we have a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as offered.
Okay.
I have a second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, okay? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, the consent agenda passes, all right. Next up is emergency bill number 4834.
And before we move forward, on the, your points of interest, a motion is necessary to amend Rule 20 of the rules. Did you want to read that for a motion?
Yes, I will read that. Okay, all right. We have, a motion is necessary to amend Rule 20 of council rules to allow substitute bill 4822. And, now, this is for the emergency bill. That comes first, though, correct?
Correct, but this is just for later on in the meeting.
Okay, all right. And then, council will receive the basic draft prior to 8:00 a.m. Thursday, prior to the council meeting. Thank you. All right, emergency bill number 4834.
Emergency bill number 4834 requested by Mike Crowbert, sponsored by Terry Hollander, and emergency ordinance amending sections 120.470A ordinances, ordinance of St. Charles County, Missouri OSU CMO, revising annual reporting requirements for agencies funded by the Community Assistance Board during the COVID-19 emergency by extending the April 15, 2020 deadline for service report filing to August 14, 2020.
Any questions or comments on this particular bill? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Emergency bill number 4834, an emergency ordinance amending sections 120.470A ordinance of St. Charles County, Missouri OSU CMO, revising annual reporting requirements for agencies funded by the Community Assistance Board during the COVID-19 emergency by extending the April 15, 2020 deadline for service report filing to August 14, 2020. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Yalom?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Okay, emergency bill number 4834 passes. Next up, bills for final passage, starting with bill number 4822.
Bill number 4822, an ordinance affirming the Board of Zoning's adjustments decision on application VAR 20-01.
Questions or comments concerning this particular bill?
Mr. Chairman, I was unclear. Do you need a motion now to substitute that?
You need a motion for the substitute.
Because we.
We already did that, didn't we?
No.
You read the motion. It said, "A motion is necessary to amend," but we did not.
Now we're.
So, I would make that motion to amend Rule 20 of council rules to allow substitute bill 4822 and 4827 to move forward. The council received the basic drafts prior to 8:00 a.m. on Thursday, prior to the council meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We are now discussing substitute bill 4822.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we amend bill number 4822 and replace it with substitute bill number 4822.
Do I have a second?
And then discuss, if you have any discussions.
All right. Okay, discussion on the substitute bill. Mr. Cronin.
I listened to the objections the folks had along that stretch of 94, and actually drove out there and take a look at the area a bit. Also, one of the applicants, Mr. Dyer, is from the St. Paul area. I know his family pretty well, and I took the time to actually meet with Mr. Dyer, Mr. Wise at the site, and tried to soak in all the different concerns that the neighbors had. And essentially, based on that, I worked on the substitute bill. The main concerns we heard overall, the drainage canal, it's towards the front part of the property, and that is a large canal. I walked it, and I kicked a flock of ducks off it even. It's that big a canal. So, in this substitute bill, it does have, they have to construct proper drainage culverts on that canal and keep that canal in working order as determined by the Director of Community Development. The second thing was screening on 94 and the visibility of 94, how this thing's going to look. Well, most of the other fences along that stretch of 94, on either side, one's the city of St. Charles, and the other is another storage lot, they are at the 20-foot easement, which is what the applicant's asking for. So, aligning those fences up is going to make that property look better anyway. Additionally, the applicant has agreed to construct a screening, a visual barrier between the storage units and 94, consisting of earthen berms, fencing, vegetation, a combination of the three. Again, that screening will be as high as anything stored in that portion of the lot, and that will also be determined by the Director of Community Development. Mr. Dyer and Mr. Wise are happy with us. They seem to be happy with it. It's something they can do, something that won't prevent them from doing their lot. I would remind council that they could just build whatever they want to do and go 35 foot back. I think it'd look like hell if they did that. I think this particular proposal now is going to make a lot better-looking lot for the folks in that area, and that's why I worked on it. Thank you.
Yes.
First of all, I appreciate Mr. Cronin's work on this. I know you spent a lot of time talking to Mr. Dyer and his partner and working out some conditions. After, at the last meeting, they requested, instead of the 10-foot variance they had originally requested, which was denied by the Board of Zoning Adjustment, they increased that to 20 feet, as opposed to the 30-foot, I think, was the decision of the Board of Zoning and Adjustment. So, as I said, I appreciate your taking the time to meet with them and to coming up with some conditions, which I think would assuage some of the concerns that the residents in that area have about coming down either Twelman Road or down Highway 94 and seeing yet another unsightly storage area. However, based upon the fact that I've had so many of my constituents opposed to that, I'm going to have to vote no on this, although, as I said, I think you've done about the best that can be done under the situation, given the fact that the current zoning in place is industrial and would permit them to make the use of storing the containers and the other things that they want to store there. I would just say on a slightly different issue, but somewhat related to this, is since I've been on the county council, I've spent a lot of time down there, and I have to tell you that that whole area does require some continued enforcement in terms of unsightliness and not following the rules and regulations for those kind of facilities. I think those of you who have driven by there, too, have seen some really terrible things, and there are some issues that I think we need to work on to make that whole area a more sightly entrance to the city of St. Charles. And so, I still have to vote no, but I appreciate Mr. Cronin's work in respect to getting the best deal that I think could be gotten under the circumstances. So, thank you for that, Mr. Cronin.
Mr. Brazel.
I remember when they were talking about this, one of the big concerns was the cargo trailers and the tractor trailers. And I also remember the partner, Mr. Wise, saying that they would agree to put those items in the back lot. And how come that's not on here as a condition? Because when I sent the conditions to Donna, that was one of mine, but then I thought, you guys, I thought, Joe, then I was.
you guys, I thought, Joe, then I was told Joe's doing it. If you guys don't wanna add that as, as, as in there, that's okay, but I think it should be in there, 'cause if you're mentioning we should start cleaning it up, well, when? Let's start now. It's, if they agreed to that, which I remember he did, isn't that correct? He said they would agree to put the cargo trailers and the tractor trailers on the back lot. Do you guys remember him saying that? So why wouldn't we just put that in as a condition? 'Cause they're getting something from us on the variance, so we could throw that in there. 'Cause there's a lot of beat-up looking tractor trailers out there and cargo trailers, which most storage lots that I'm familiar with don't have those kind of things. And I know this is owned industrial, I know it's, it's different, but at this, at this opportunity, I would think since they agreed to it, that we would put that in there.
Mr. Cronin.
The, the perp, the reason, we've had a little discussion, not so much about the tractor trailers, but with RVs, and RVs are often as tall as tractor trailers, and they do wanna be able to store RVs. I think the concern is that not so much the height of it, is that people are gonna see it from ninety-four. So if they want to put something, a thirteen-foot tall RV or a thirteen-foot tall storage trailer in front of that lot, they're gonna have to put a thirteen-foot tall berm fence or vegetation screening, okay? Which, that is not their intention, 'cause that'll be costly. So more than likely, you're gonna see an eight-to-ten-foot berm there, and you're gonna see nothing taller than that in there. I wanted to give them the flexibility and design, 'cause they have a lot of dirt to move, that they could store whatever they can hide, okay? And that's pretty much what they're doing. I think the most concerned people didn't care how high, how it was stored, they just didn't wanna see it, okay?
Well, the berm's limited at about three foot tall, because you got the setback and it's got a, what is it, a three-to-one slope? So you, you don't have, the, the berm's only gonna be three foot tall, and that was also mentioned in the meeting. So I thought that RVs generally are licensed, if people own an RV, they're, they're usually very expensive unless you get some radium ones, which I get sometimes do. But now tractor trailers are not licensed, and people buy those and stick them in there to push junk in, and so, I'm talking about the, the trailers, like all those pictures, and so.
That's what you're saying, but then again, the berm's gonna be taller than three foot. They've got plenty of dirt there, okay?
No, Joe, 'cause you got twenty feet. Think about it, you got twenty feet, you gotta.
They can go back towards the rear of the lot with a berm taller.
No, the berm in the front, between the road, ninety-four and the fence. So it's limited, because you only have so much room. So it's only gonna be three foot tall.
Then they're gonna put fencing or they'll put.
No, no, but, but I don't think we're requiring them to cover up the stuff in there. All I'm saying is, is I'm gonna make a motion to offer, uh, no cargo trailers or tractor trailers on the front lot. And if anybody wants a second, that, that's fine, and if, if it goes in there, goes in there, if it doesn't, it doesn't. I mean, that's, but that's what we kinda talked about at the meeting. Is that, can I make that motion? Or you guys?
You certainly can. Do I have a second?
I just have one comment for you.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, I'll go first.
Uh, the berm can actually extend out into the setback. It doesn't have to meet the setback as far as landscaping and the berm, so it can extend all the way up to the right of way, so it could be taller. That's the only comment I had.
But does Dave, doesn't, I, that's, but doesn't it have to say that, though? Or do we not have to, 'cause it doesn't say it's gotta cover up the, it doesn't say that in here, so how, how are we determining the height? I mean, it doesn't say it covers up all.
I worked with Mike Herbert on this and the language on, because, and basically, the way it is now, they have to cover anything that they're storing there as per, as directed by the Director of Community Development. So, for instance, if they're limited to making the berm seven foot tall and they put a six-foot fence on top of it, nobody's gonna see anything, okay? So, you know, that being said, I don't think they would have a problem with, with, uh, limiting storage, uh, trailers, but they're gonna have a problem with, with RVs, because they're gonna wanna start RVs.
I agree with the RVs. They should have, that's what those lots are for. I'm not saying that, I'm just saying tractor trailers and cargo trailers. I, I'd like to make a motion to put, uh, that they cannot have cargo trailers or tractor trailers in the front lot. Does anybody wanna second it?
Do I have a second?
Nancy, you can second it, just.
I'll second it.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second.
I'm walking a tightrope here.
Yes. Johnny, check it.
I don't know, Mr. Hammond may remember this better than I do, but didn't there used to be a, like a lagoon down there, right behind that? Before the city actually provided, uh, I think there was a, it was like a sewage lagoon down there, wasn't it?
There was a sewage lagoon.
That's further east.
My, my point is, when, when this thing first went down, everybody thought it was an improvement to the neighborhood. And, and the problem, problem, of course, is we've had a lot of nice development since then, around it, with, with, you know, uh, with Newtown and, and other subdivisions and everything. There's a lot of these little, uh, spot zonings for industrial. And whatever you do tonight, I, I advise you, maybe, maybe we ought to look at, you know, look at some of those and just see if maybe, maybe that those industrial uses aren't really, aren't really good for the neighborhood today, even though it might've been, it might've looked pretty good twenty, thirty years ago.
Mr. Cronin.
If I could reach, I mean, if we wanted to just temporarily table this to, for the part in the meeting, I'd like to at least call Mr. Dyer and make sure that he wouldn't have a problem with objection to Mr. Brazel's, um, suggestion. And Mr. Brazel, somebody can, making sure to clear, you're saying no storage of, of any type of semi-trailer? You're talking about, how are we gonna define that, okay?
A tractor trailer, like a, you know, fifth-wheeler, you know, with.
What about, for instance, you've got, you've got, you've got gooseneck trailers that people haul with, with race cars in the back, stuff like that? You don't consider that? How about unlicensed tractor trailers?
Yeah, well, a tractor trailer, yeah. I mean, I, I, that's just, if you guys don't wanna do that.
Don't, just, well, I just wanna make a motion, because tractor trailer, the, the truck is the tractor and the trailer is the back.
Oh, the trailer for tractor trailers, yeah. I don't know, whatever you, however you wanna word that, and then the cargo trailers that, the, those orange things that they stick out there, you know, that, that you put on ships. 'Cause that was the biggest complaint of everybody.
Car, storage containers.
Those cargo containers.
Yeah, shipping containers, yeah.
Can I make a suggestion that if you feel strongly about that, and if you wanna check with Mr. Dyer, because it may not be a problem, then everybody may agree, can we table this, Phil, until the next meeting?
I, I promised I would not table this. They wanna get going on this, okay? So if it's okay, I'd like to just table it for this portion of the meeting. I'll make a quick phone call to him, okay? If he doesn't have any problem with it, we'll do it.
No, that's fine, but that guy said that. I remember, he said he wouldn't have a problem with that, but go ahead, that's fine.
My, my only concern in asking that is language, um, and making sure that we have the proper language in there.
Well, let me ask you guys.
Because what your definition of that is may be something different, and if we're unclear on it, we may just be causing more problems than what we're solving.
Let me ask you guys this. Are there storage lots, that's way north of where I'm, way south, right? So, and I used to have to go out there all the time, I'd boat out there, but are there a lot of other tractors, lots with tractor trailers?
There's one, right, we approved one on Salt River Road, okay? That's right, brand-new county road, and there's a huge one on Salt River Road.
With tractor trailers or cargo trailers?
Yes, it's all tractor, it's nothing but tractor trailers.
Well, then I'll withdraw my motion, because if, if I don't wanna be unfair to one guy and to the other.
Okay, so withdrawing? You're fine. Okay, all right.
It does say that the visual screening shall be of elevation equal to or exceeding the elevation of any stored unit in the area west of the drainage canal. So I, I think, I mean, if we, if we enforce that, that should help a lot.
I think the good news about that is it keeps the entire area uniform. So it's the same for him as it is for the people before. No one has an advantage or disadvantage, they're all equal in that area. And I get it's, it's tough when you're crossing from municipality into the county.
Yeah.
And it can be weird, but I think this is a nice compromise for everybody, and, uh, I'm good with the bill the way it is.
I think it'll improve the looks of the area substantially, even considering the property next to, uh, next to it, the city of St. Charles, and there's junk dumped all over, okay? It's owned by the city of St. Charles. The other thing, that stretch of ninety-four, a lot of folks that are coming from Illinois, from the Alton area, they come through that way to get to our county, so it is kind of a backdoor entrance to St. Charles County.
It is, for sure.
All right.
Yes, I remember years ago, there was an issue in fines, and there was a special, uh, commendation made for this, this, uh, storage area that's got all these old tractors in it, and it's still there.
Yeah.
So, a lot of people, I got it, I saw it, Joe.
That, that's, that's right.
So charge entry fee and make it a museum.
All right, uh, before us is actual, uh, is substitute bill number forty-eight twenty-two. There's no more comments, we will call the roll on substitute bill number forty-eight twenty-two.
Actually, you have a motion and a second. You, now you need to have, uh, all in favor or to ask for the substitute, if they agree with the substitute language.
All right, okay. Uh, all in favor of the language in substitute bill number forty-eight twenty-two, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right. Now I believe we're ready for roll call.
Yes.
Thank you.
Substitute bill number forty-eight twenty-two, an ordinance modifying and amending the Board of Zoning Adjustment Decision on Application VAR twenty-dash-zero-one. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ealem?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
No.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Okay, bill number, uh, substitute bill number forty-eight twenty-two passes. Uh, next bill for final passage is number, is bill number forty-eight twenty-three.
Bill number forty-eight twenty-three, an ordinance amending sections one-two-zero-point-five-two-zero, one-two-zero-point-five-three-zero, one-two-zero-point-five-four-zero, one-two-zero-point-five-five-zero, one-two-zero-point-five-six-zero, and one-two-zero-point-five-seven-zero ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSC CMO, relating to the County Commission on Environmental Quality.
Okay, any questions or comments on this particular bill? Seeing none, please call the roll.
An ordinance amending sections one-two-zero-point-five-twenty, one-two-zero-point-five-thirty, one-two-zero-point-five-forty, one-two-zero-point-five-fifty, one-two-zero-point-five-sixty, and one-two-zero-point-five-seventy ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSC CMO, relating to the County Commission on Environmental Quality. Councilmember Ealem?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Okay, bill number forty-eight twenty-three passes. Next bill for final passage is bill number forty-eight twenty-four.
Bill number forty-eight twenty-four, an ordinance authorizing execution of documents for and receipt of grant funds up to the amount of five thousand four hundred ninety-four dollars from the Missouri Office of Homeland Security and East West Gateway Council of Governments for reimbursement of the actual eligible travel expenses to send two staff persons of St. Charles County Office of the Regional Medical Examiner to the American Academy of Forensic Science Sciences National Association of Medical Examiners Conference reimbursable from the two thousand eighteen Urban Areas Security Initiative Grant UASI CFDA number ninety-seven-point-zero-six-seven FAI N E M W dash two thousand eighteen SS zero-zero-zero-four-four.
Okay, question or comments on this particular bill? Seeing none, please call the roll.
An ordinance authorizing execution of documents for and receipt of grant funds up to the amount of five thousand four hundred ninety-four dollars from the Missouri Office of Homeland Security and East West Gateway Council of Governments for reimbursement of the actual eligible travel expenses to send two staff persons of St. Charles County Office of Regional Medical Examiner to the American Academy of Forensic Sciences slash National Association of Medical Examiners Conference reimbursable from the two thousand eighteen Urban Areas Security Initiative Grant FAI N E M W two thousand eighteen SS zero-zero-zero-four-four. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ealem?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ealem?
Yes.
Okay, uh, bill number forty-eight twenty-four passes. Next bill for final passage is bill number forty-eight twenty-five.
Bill number forty-eight twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing the non-binding projected tax rates of the county for the General Revenue Fund of, and for various special funds of and for the county of St. Charles, Missouri, for the year twenty-twenty, in order to develop the notice of projected tax liability to accompany the assessor's notice of assessed value, all as mandated by Senate Bill seven-eleven, two thousand eight.
Okay, questions or comments on this particular bill? Seeing none, please call the roll.
An ordinance authorizing the non-binding projected tax rates of the county for the General Revenue Fund and for various special funds of and for the county of St. Charles, Missouri, for the year twenty-twenty, in order to develop the notice of projected tax liability to accompany the assessor's notice of assessed value, all as mandated by Senate Bill seven-eleven, two thousand eight. Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ealem?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Okay, bill number forty-eight twenty-five passes. Next bill for final passage is bill number forty-eight twenty-six.
Bill number forty-eight twenty-six, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or is designated to execute a building lease agreement with the city of Wentzville, Missouri, for a portion of the premises located at sixteen-oh-five Wentzville Parkway.
Questions or comments on this particular bill? Seeing none, please call the roll.
An ordinance authorizing the county executive or is designated to execute a building lease agreement with the city of Wentzville, Missouri, for a portion of the premises located at sixteen-oh-five Wentzville Parkway. Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ealem?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Okay, bill number forty-eight twenty-six passes.
Uh, the last bill for final passage is bill number forty-eight twenty-seven.
Bill number forty-eight twenty-seven, an ordinance amending sections four-ten-point-zero-seven-zero, four-ten-point-one-hundred, four-ten-point-three-thirty, four-ten-point-three-fifty, four-ten-point-three-seventy, four-ten-point-three-ninety, and four-twenty-five-point-zero-two-zero of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSC CMO, and adding a new section, four-ten-point-one-zero-five, to create a new category of minor subdivisions and provide specific minor subdivision regulations governing said minor subdivisions.
Okay, uh, Mr. Cronin.
Um, for quite a few years, um, we've had a problem in the rural parts of this county with folks that, farm families, many of them farm families for five, six, eight generations in this county, that wanna split off pieces of ground for their, their family members to build on. And those type of situations, they either had to do things illegally, or they had to face the same kind of requirements as we place on small lot subdivisions that are in the metropolitan areas of, of the county. Even though we want to try to promote five acre lots in the county, we weren't really doing it with our ordinances. So, I'd like to thank Mike Herbert and Dave Hammond, and also Arda Rourke for working really hard and coming up with some compromises that we could work with, that everybody could live with to protect the citizens of this county, but also promote these small, mostly family-owned subdivisions. Additionally, we got input from, put it this way, a leading private right, private property rights attorney. We got input from a lot of, actually the largest landowner in my, my district, and I think we came up with something that everybody's pretty happy with. It does give Mike, in, in community development, oversight to these developments. These developments will be five acre lots, nothing smaller. All the roads will be private roads within these developments, and it will greatly lessen the cost of people to do these five acre developments. I know of two subdivisions in my district, and one in Councilman Brazel's district, that are actually going to happen now because of this, of this bill. Additionally, one of the subdivisions in Mr. Brazel's district was one that we just turned down for three acre development, and now the guy's going to do it with a five acre development because he can make it, the financial numbers work with this bill. So, again, I'd like to thank Mike Herbert and Dave Hammond and, and Arda for working on this bill, and I think we got a winner on this one.
Do you want to make a motion for the substitute?
Yes, I guess so. So, I said that first, shouldn't I?
We should have. Let's, let's Mr. Hammond speak first here.
I just want to quickly say I'd like to thank the county staff for putting this together and, and the county councillor's office. I, I wish we would have done this a long time ago because it's really going to save people some money trying to, trying to do a small development for their family or, or friends, and so I say, thank you very much.
Entertain the substitute bill here.
Require motion amended forty-eight twenty, whoa. Requires motion amended forty-eight twenty-seven, replace with substitute bill forty-eight twenty-seven.
Seconds.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are now going to be voting on substitute bill number forty-eight twenty-seven.
Substitute bill number forty-eight twenty-seven, an ordinance amending sections four-ten-point-oh-seven, zero-seven-zero, four-ten-point-one-hundred, four-ten-point-three-thirty, four-ten-point-three-fifty, four-ten-point-three-seventy, four-ten-point-three-ninety, and four-twenty-five-point-zero-two-zero of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSC CMO, and adding a new section, four-ten-point-one-zero-five, to create a new category of minor subdivisions and provide specific minor subdivision regulations governing said minor subdivisions. Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Okay, substitute bill number forty-eight twenty-seven passes. Next, we have bills for introduction, starting with bill number forty-eight thirty-two.
Bill number forty-eight thirty-two, requested by Craig Tychowski, sponsored by Joe Brazel, an ordinance vacating a portion of Old Dweller Road pursuant to section two-two-eight-point-one-six-zero or SMO and approving a real property exchange agreement related thereto.
Questions or comments on this particular bill? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the second bill for introduction, bill number forty-eight thirty-three.
Bill number forty-eight thirty-three, requested by Demetrius Chianci Chapman, sponsored by Terry Hollander, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental agreement for financial assistance grant agreement number two-zero-two-zero-zero-three between St. Charles County and the St. Louis Jefferson Solid Waste Management District for receipt of funds in an amount up to sixty thousand dollars.
Questions or comments on this particular bill? Seeing none, will there be any tabled bills that will be brought off the table?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we remove tabled bill number forty-eight sixteen for consideration and discussion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to remove bill number forty-eight sixteen from the table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are now discussing bill number forty-eight sixteen.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, question?
Sure.
The way this is structured and how it comes to the council tonight, it's a little unusual in that a yes vote by the council, if that, if the yes was the prevailing view of the council, that would actually result in the project being rejected. Because the yes vote would be affirming decision, the board of zoning adjustment denying the application. Just wanted to make that clear there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Comments, Mr. Ehlum?
I appreciate Mr. Watson saying that, so, just so people at home are clear, when we vote on this issue, we are actually voting to uphold what the Board of Variance did in turning down the tower. So, if we vote yes, that means we are not in favor of the tower being built, and if we vote no, that means we are in favor of the tower being built. So, I just want to make sure everybody understands that. I've been involved in this issue from the begin, beginning, and a lot of strong opinions on this one, is the nicest way I could possibly say it. The prevailing comment that I hear from folks in the subdivision around the area said, I'm sure if this was being built in your backyard, you would have a different opinion. I know Mr. White has been out and done a lot of investigation, and I'm sure we'll hear from him, and I appreciate the time that you've spent on this, on your own personal time in investigating it. I, I did find it interesting, I got a note on Sunday from the homeowners' board of Whitmore Community, and the folks at Whitmore reached out to me, which as you might imagine is about seven miles away from where this water tower's going to be built, but the folks in Whitmore are in favor of this water tower being built. So, I asked the gentleman who's the president of Whitmore Homeowners' Association, are you open to the fact of us moving this water tower from the proposed area on Canous, and we can build this water tower at Whitmore? And he said, we would need to talk about the location for that. And I kind of said, well, that's where we sit right now. I don't think there's anyone involved in this discussion on either side that doubts the fact that putting a hundred forty-foot, two-million-gallon tank at this location is going to improve the water pressure. I think the resonance point has been the people who are in Berkshire Downs and Legacy Point and Avondale, those folks are served by PWSD Two. They are not served by Missouri American as their primary water source. Now, as Missouri American would point out to you, they are the backup for PWSD Two, but they are not the primary provider. So, most of this water is going to go east of Canous Road from where these subdivisions are located and why they have this objection. We did a town hall phone call due to the coronavirus and trying to keep our, trying to keep our spacing, county executive, so we were trying to do everything we can, and I appreciate the folks from Missouri American for really going above and beyond to try and hear the residents. But I think the residents were clear in the fact that if you build a forty-foot tower with the other things that you could do to increase the water pressure with pumps and things like that, they felt like that was a good enough compromise, and as we know with our current zoning, they can build a forty-foot tower there right now. But Missouri American feels like this, it would be better to build a hundred and forty. I personally come down on the standpoint of, if this would have been done twenty-five, thirty years ago, I get it. But for these folks to build their homes, the neighborhoods go up around it, and they knew going in that a forty-foot tower was a possibility. They knew that. Taking that into consideration, they bought their homes, and they built their properties. So, I think coming to the game now and saying, but wait, there's more. We've decided to put it another hundred feet up in the air, is not fair to those homeowners who are going to have to deal with it. It's also not fair, especially since they're not going to benefit from it directly. And I would encourage Missouri American to reach out to the folks at Whitmore, who seem to be open to having this water tower put up in their neighborhood, and let's see if we can make something happen over in Weldon Spring, although to be fair, I have not talked to Mayor Licklider about putting a hundred forty-foot water tower up in Weldon Spring, so I'm not sure how he would feel about that. But I would encourage the council to vote yes on this, which is saying no to putting the water tower up.
Other comments?
I did do a lot of research on this. I listened to the people and heard their concerns, their concerns were, I went out and visited the site, saw the site, and then I drove to the neighborhood, and I did talk to, most people weren't home, but there was one lady there, and I talked to her about it, and she said her comments were, I'm, I'm told that I will have to look at the water tower. That was her comment. And then her other comment was, besides, the water's going to help Cottleville, not us. So, that was her concern, that she would have to look at the water tower. So, I went to three sites, I don't know, I don't want to put them on the spot in the back, but I have some visuals, we could look at if they have them. If not, I'll just discuss it. I went to one site that's on Harvest, Harvest Road, and they have two storage tanks there and a large cell tower. So, I talked to people in that neighborhood, how it affected them, and one lady said, in the very beginning, when they were putting them up, there was some problems with some construction and did some damage to some of their property, and they, they reimbursed them for the damage. Other people I talked to don't even notice it's there. One person I talked to said he really likes it because it has a lot of birds of prey there, and they like to watch them. So, really, had no concern, they didn't have any concern. So, there was a house that was for sale right across from these tanks and this cell tower. So, I called a real estate agent and talked to him and asked him if it, these towers and this cell, if these towers and storage tanks had caused any problem in the sales of property there. And he said, no. He said, in fact, we had one house that went up for sale, it sold for, in four minutes more than what it was listed for. So, there wasn't a problem in that area. So, I went to another area. I don't know if it's at St. Charles Tower or St. Peter's Tower, I think it's St. Charles, and it's off of Muggie Road, and you can see it from like Home Depot in that area. So, I went in that neighborhood and canvassed the neighborhood and walked all through the neighborhood and talked to some of those people. Once again, the people didn't seem to have a problem with it, that once it's there, they don't notice it. And in fact, oh, here's some of the visuals. In fact, go ahead and move along, we'll just go through the visuals. In fact, let's see, where was I? One lady was talking about the, the tower and the property under the tower, and they used that for, you know, a park. Another area I went to was a big water tower on ninety-four where the old concrete plant was, remember where that was? So, I went back behind there and talked to some of those people. Once again, there was one lady that said she was very concerned about it in the very beginning, but now she doesn't even notice it. There was a real estate agent I called, pardon me?
How tall are those right there?
Those are storage tanks, I don't know how tall they are, but they're more than forty feet, I think, I'm not sure.
They're not a hundred and forty feet. I'd say they're about sixty-foot towers.
But cell tower, but the, the cell tower is, you know, a lot taller than those.
Well, were those, was the house there first, or the tanks there first?
Uh, a little bit of both.
Some of those tanks were there prior, because I used to live right down on Youngerman Road, just down the street from where these are, the next exit down, and a lot of those houses that are built around it came after the fact. And the same thing happened with the Muggie Road property, because I think that's Brighton is the name of that subdivision there, and that subdivision was just built, I want to say about eight years ago, seven, eight years ago. That water tower was also up first before the subdivision went in, but your point's still taken.
Yeah. So, that's the water tower that, that you're speaking of.
Yep, that's the one.
That's the one that has the park under it, people use it.
But that, again, those houses are brand new.
Yeah, that water tower was pre-existing to the subdivision.
Yeah, so there's a, I mean, go ahead, I'll let you.
So, now that, now that the tower, it's on Highway ninety-four where the old concrete mixing plant was, that's a new tower, and there's houses that were, were already there when that tower was built, and I canvassed that neighborhood, and there didn't seem to be any problem with that tower, except one family said, well, if my wife had any choice, I, she wouldn't want it, but I don't really care. And the point I'm trying to make, I want to find out for the people that have these concerns about their, their real estate values going down, it didn't seem like it affected their real estate values at all, or the, the sale of their properties. And the people that are worried about looking at it, after a while, it seems like these people just don't even notice it. So, I'm, I'm going to vote in favor of it. I think it's sort of the good of the county, if we need it for help, the fire districts and help water pressure in other parts of the county, I think it's a small sacrifice for these people to take if they have to look at a water tower. There's already a cell tower out there they have to look at, so as far, as far as the view is concerned, I think they'll get used to it.
Mr. Hammond?
You know, I think a lot of the objections would have been avoided if the water company would have put up a sign many years ago when they were, when they were, they said they bought this property, that this would be a future site of a hundred forty-foot water tower before these homes were built. Then people would have realized, you know, it was going to be there, but to, you know, to come now and say, yeah, we want to put up a hundred forty-foot water tower, and these people, these, these subdivisions aren't that old, I, I cannot support this, and I, I will affirm with the Board of Zoning.
I agree with Dave, I, I wouldn't, I'm not going to support it either, because it's one thing, like my thing, you know, you, if you live, if you buy the house knowing the water tower's there, that's one thing, but not having it put in after the fact. And if they agreed to put in a forty, a forty-foot tower was what they were going to do, I do believe that they could put pumps and generators in, I know they could, and they could put a pump house in where it holds this. The only time the generators kick on is when there's a storm and the power's out. And so, that's what, hospitals have backup generators, that's what you do. Grocery stores have a backup generator, so why can't they afford it? They're a for-profit company, and so I don't see why we would, it was irresponsible on their part not to plan. And so, I don't think, why put the burden on the people who live there because they're poor planners? Or they're just trying to get away being cost-effective and not coming up with more money. And so, I, I'm not going to put that burden on the people that live in that area, because I'm certainly not want that thing in my backyard. I mean, I hate the cell tower that they put up, the county put up. I don't know that story. I mean, so no, I don't, I look at that every day, and I don't like it, but I mean, it is, it is what it is, you know?
But you like, but you like to use your cellphone.
Yeah, well, when I moved out there, I didn't have service, I didn't care.
Mr. Cronin?
When I left St. Paul government, I thought I was done with water towers. I, I, I lost considerable amount of my backside over a water tower, and I learned a lot about it, though, and I learned that they need to be where they need to be by, based on engineering and the supply of water to the area. I have looked at all the alternative sites that have been proposed, and none of them are as good as this site. I think the PSC will eventually tell the folks that it's going to have to be built there, because if they build it at another site and results in additional cost and not as good a water pressure, that's causing those folks to pay a lot more. I think projects like this are like what we face when we face a road project, and a good example is a subdivision where my son lives in Wentzville. There's a major road plan on the middle, going right through the middle of the subdivision, the homeowners weren't told about it, a lot of people don't want it, okay, but it's going to get done because the need is there. There's definitely a need for this tower, there's, the two fire districts in two cities have told us this. Also, just to be frank with you, just so folks know straight up, this tower's inevitable, okay, because there's question about whether state law even allows us to make a zoning decision on a public utility, number one. Number two is, I did have a conversation with the city of O'Fallon, I think it's highly likely that that might be, be in the next in the city of O'Fallon, because the fact that's six, six-million-dollar water tower, and they're going to collect some property tax off of it. The other thing is, is the PSC may come down and, and, and tell us that it has to be built there. And I do emphasize with the folks that are, or sympathize with the folks that live around there, but, but when, in my instance in St. Paul, we had to put one in to supply a new subdivision across the street from people that had existing wells and didn't benefit from that tower at all. They were very upset about it, and this was wide-open prairie, no trees, nothing like the Canous roadside. I went out there and walked it, it's a wooded site. They're going to see the top of the tower, but they're not, most of them aren't going to see anything up close. But this one was right across the street, and we did it, I caught a hell of a lot of hell, the subdivision's successful. After the initial approval, got no more complaints, and when I left city government, I got a nice plaque from the city with a picture of a water tower on it. So, so I will be voting no, because I think, I, no meaning, yes, I support the tower, because I know these folks are going to get a tower there one way or the other, either way, and I don't want to see the county endure a long, protracted, expensive lawsuit as a result of our decision tonight.
Any other comments?
That's a good point. I mean, if we, you know, if we deny this, then it's just going to cost the county money, so.
Well, let's just, any, any hard decision, let's not do it, because we're afraid we're going to get sued.
Just for clarification now, because this is coming from the Board of
Variance.
Variance.
Takes five.
It requires five votes, is correct. Five votes of, of no to overturn the B and Z's decision. Okay, is that, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Bill number forty-eight sixteen, an ordinance affirming the Board of Zoning, I'm sorry, an ordinance affirming the Board of Zoning Adjustment's decision on application VAR nineteen-dash-zero-six. Councilmember Cronin?
No.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
No.
Okay, bill number forty-eight sixteen, fail, it, it passed. Give me some wording. We affirm, we, yes, we have affirmed the decision that was made by the B and Z, and at this point, the water tower is not allowed.
No, a hundred and forty-foot water tower is not allowed.
Right.
True.
Yes, the forty-foot one is, is still in play because it's, it's been approved for that. Yes, Mr. Watson?
Mr. Chairman, just as we get to the end of the meeting, if I could, your staff has worked diligently to try to balance the public's ability to provide input in these meetings in this unique circumstance with the reality of the situation we're operating in. And one of those things that they, for this meeting, as you know, assembling the public comments, making sure they had those by topic and those kinds of things, and then becoming familiar with what they were, because they had to identify what those comments were advocating or rejecting. And so, for that purpose, and then they had to get ready for the council meeting as well. So, as part of that, it was posted on the agenda, at the time the agenda was posted, that at five o'clock tonight would be the point in time that they would then cut off accepting those comments, which would allow them to get in, look at all the comments, and do the things they necessary to allow that. And so, that was, it was decision that we discussed the practicalities of what they felt like they needed and still get ready for the council meeting. I was very comfortable from the sunshine law perspective, that was, that was a completely appropriate way to do it, and I just want the council to be aware of that.
Okay, yes, all of us on the council, all of us in the administration really appreciate you ladies' work. It's the, you know, a lot of, a lot of things are happening and, and, and things that are a little bit different, a little bit unusual, and we've, we've done the very best we can.
Thanks for going to the meetings every day, too, Donna.
Not a problem, yes.
We appreciate that.
Yes, very much.
We do the best.
Okay, any other announcements?
Does Director want to say anything about latest numbers?
Certainly. Did you want me to weigh, Councilman Hammond? Did you want me to say first?
No, go ahead. I can say it after.
I just updated your numbers as of eight o'clock tonight. We are at sixty-nine, we went up twenty cases positives today. So I also forwarded to each of your normal emails that you asked us to use that article, which I think will be very helpful in answering some of the questions that you all have been asking about what do we expect. So hopefully if that helps, and if there's anything else that, that we can help with, we're happy to do that, and we do really appreciate Donna taking the burden of communication off of us, because communicating is the most important thing we do, it's also, believe it or not, one of the most difficult. And so we have somebody communicating with the police chief, somebody communicating with the fire districts. The St. Charles County ambulance district has been a really excellent partner every day of this. They've been there each and every weekend with us, all day long, on and off, they shift people in and out. They have volunteered, if we can get additional testing, to have their staff fully ramp up in personal protective equipment and go out and take the samples, which, believe it or not, there aren't a lot of people standing around the street corner offering to take COVID-nineteen samples from people. So we've been really appreciative of all the work that they've done, as every police department, fire departments, the vastest what they can do. And Chris Hunt's staff at emergency management has been working nonstop to source personal protective equipment for all the first responders and the Department of Public Health. And most unsung, I think, out there is a group of epidemiologists and nurses who are tracking down over seven hundred contacts and keeping track of seven hundred people who are in quarantine. So they're a pretty amazing group of people, and not a very big group of people. And finally, I have to say, the school nurses who don't have any school have been showing up to help them.
Wow.
And those volunteers, my gosh, we so appreciate that. It has been absolutely amazing to see them walking in there every day, going into the room that we have for volunteers, as if some retired nurses coming in and, and taking instruction. And that's also what the detectives from the police department have been doing, is doing contact tracing. So we have quite a team out there, there's between fifty and seventy people a day, I think, that are rotating in and out for various functions, and, you know, when we built the building, we never anticipated that the enemy we'd be facing would be a virus. But they've adapted the building to their needs, and they've worked really hard and to form teams to get everything done. And I did leave a group out, which has been John's lawyers and Brian Wise, who also have been performing invalubly for us.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes, I would request that the county exec's office would please communicate with the people down on Westwood Drive on what's going on. Currently, the yards are flooded, and their driveways, every time it rains, there's standing water there. This has been, they stopped work out there for some long period of time, and the people up there just want to know what's going on, and they're calling me, and I know they're calling Mike, Mike Elam, so.
Westwood Drive.
So.
Where's Westwood Drive?
I talked to John Greig who earlier tonight, and John is going to reach out to, we've had some folks who've asked about the construction that's going on there, it's left some ditches.
Just help me, I can't, where, Westwood Drive, I don't.
It runs parallel to Highway ninety-four, south of Mid Rivers.
Oh, okay, okay, all right. I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
All right.
So there's an, it's been under construction forever, because we had all the utilities, when we started widening that road and adding in sidewalks, the utilities took that opportunity to move all their stuff, so we've really been at the mercy of the utilities over this last year or so, trying to get that project done.
Did you talk to John today about it?
I talked to John right before this meeting, and John is going to reach out to the gentleman who sent the petition in and try to set up a meeting with them to talk about what's going on, explain the situation, and see if there's some options that we can try to work through. But right now, when it rains, like it has pretty heavily a couple of times here lately, those ditches fill up all the way, and there's just concern about younger kids getting caught in that water and something bad going on there, so.
There's nowhere for it to go.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of the issue right now. So we're in the middle of construction in that area, and it's, it's a tough time.
Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Okay.
Next.
We are adjourned. Thank you, folks.